Motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Ms. Howes made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous, okay? Everybody?
Yes, sir.
Abby, give me about fifteen minutes.
You can hold this.
I'm waddling.
Great. This time, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council to order for February 11, 2020, and I'm going to yield the microphone to the mayor per temp.
We can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Once we sit down, we can, we'll move on.
We'll move on after that, afterward?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's do the pledge first, sir.
Okay. So you want to do that first or after the closed session?
Well...
Mayor, we're going to have to go through until we get to the agenda and then amend the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so, thank you for clarification. At this time, if everyone will please rise, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the right of the United States of America, and to the republic of whose citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for our moment of silence. Are they be seated? At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. McIntyre?
Item eight, we, uh, Mrs. Quinn, has that been processed? We've taken it off, right?
We still have to remove it.
Yeah, item eight, so we'd like to remove it, sir, postpone.
Remove?
Yeah.
Item eight, the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and then we'd like to add number 11A, sir.
11A, litter pickup on Indian Trail streets.
Right, and then, um...
Okay.
And then, um, there is, um, item 14, closed session, so we'd like to move it up, so it'll be the next item on the agenda before presentations.
Okay, before presentations, next item to make that.
Item 14, yes, sir.
Make item 14, just make it item 3A.
Yes, sir.
Is there any objection from council?
None.
Okay, if there's no objection, I'll need a mo, if there's no other, further additions or deletions?
No, sir, that is...
Any other council members?
No.
Okay, then I will need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Who was that? Mr. Head, Mr. Head made the motion to approve, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so, um, that moves us to, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Well, before you make that motion, sir, just for the benefit of the audience, I'd just like to explain to them, can everybody hear me okay? All right. We do apologize, but there is a quick matter that we do need to discuss in the closed session, so we're gonna go into closed session and take a few minutes, we do ask for your patience while we do that, and then we'll come back out, we'll be as brief as we possibly can, okay? Thank you. Motion to go in closed session, sir.
McIntyre's made the motion to go into closed session, all in favor? That would be unanimous, if you'd excuse us for a few.
All right, we need the gentleman from the, from the...
You ready?
From the town? Oh, we don't need anyone? A few more or lose? We'll have, we'll have, um, Mr. May, I'll make a motion to come out of closed session, sir.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to come out of closed session, all in favor? That would be unanimous.
All right, we can proceed.
I need the, um, next is presentation. First presentation is our citizen of the quarter, which is awarded to Joe Brundret, where, well, don't, don't be making clapping noises. Come on, boy, stand up. Come on up here. Just a few quick words about Joe. This young man, and Mom, you're going to have to help me here, has done well over how many volunteer hours in the last year? Hundred and seventy-five hours while going to school, led, is it Joe's Jolly Elves, did I get that right?
Yes.
Good. And went out and collected gifts for Cindy's Hope Chest for women suffering from breast cancer who couldn't provide a Christmas for their children, and happy to say that every family's children were given Christmas gifts, making life easier. Cancer is, uh, cancer doesn't play favorites, and yes, you get sick amongst volunteer hours with our veterans around town. Did you not help with the, um, Adopt a Cop also? A few years back? Yeah, he, he just doesn't remember, he does so much. And so, it's, it's rare, well, it's not rare, but we, we often look at our younger generation, this goes back to my parents, our grandparents, our great parents, you know, I walked uphill both ways, wearing nothing but a pair of gym shorts and a blizzard, and it was always more difficult, and the next generation's worse and worse and worse. But I, and Joe's a shining example of the future. There's more like him, he's leading the way, and as you can see, he's very talkative. And he's not going to slow down, he's going to keep going, and recently, Joe, do you care to show what you've received? It's in your pocket?
I have a coin. It is the Presidential Service Coin.
I have one of those. It's good.
So, and, I mean, it's, you, I can't say enough good things about this young man. He's helped, he's helped me personally when I couldn't do things with my arm, just, you know, he's been voluntold, but he's also done the same to me, telling me what I have to do. So it works both ways, it's elder abuse, right, Joe? But it's with great honor that the council awards you as our fourth quarter citizen of the quarter, and you've raised the bar for the rest of us, and I'd like you to come up and receive a token of our appreciation. Abby's going to take a picture of you holding this while attempting to smile. As we can see, you wore your best suit. There's the box that goes with it, Joe.
Oh, boy.
You got a box, too? If you bring it to my house, the cats will love it. Oh, and more, if you want to wrap it up. And Joe will be attending college next year, so...
I shall keep you safe.
Well, we're proud of you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, good job. Good job, Joe.
Thank you, everybody.
And thanks for keeping your speech short. Our next presentation goes to the lobby, for, is for lobby artwork, artwork, excuse my accent, Sylvia, Sylvia Coppola, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, you got a couple minutes here.
Okay, sure. Sylvia Coppola, the name of my business is Duck Creek Pottery. I live in northern Union County, and Duck Creek runs through my property. I've been a potter for almost forty-four years, this will be the forty-fourth year, and I'd like for you all to see my artwork downstairs in the glass case in the lobby. There are cards down there, please pick up a card, and if you need pottery, give me a call. I mainly sell my business, my pottery through wholesale, and I have thirty galleries across the country, galleries and gift shops that I sell to. I also have a studio at my house, and if anybody would like to come out, just, you know, make a phone call, the number's on the card, and I have an open studio where you can come and look at the pottery and purchase things, and I appreciate the opportunity to display my work downstairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for displaying your work. Which brings us to the presentations of our new businesses in town, first is the MSA Swim Club. Peter? We give you a minute or two to tell about your business and...
Sure.
Where it's located and...
That's easy.
Okay.
Should I go? Okay, sorry.
The floor's yours, sir, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. My name is Peter Perez, um, thanks for giving me the chance to come in here tonight. We're a competitive year-round swim team. I was born and raised in Charlotte, grew up not far from here in Matthews, swam growing up, swam at Clemson, don't know if there's any Clemson fans here, and have been a coach most of my life, started a year-round swim team about seven years ago. We are called the Mecklenburg Swim Association, but I'll get back to that in a sec, but we go by MSA Swimming. This is actually our second building that we've built, and both are in Union County, so I always chuckled our, choice of our name seven years ago, but, um, anyway, so we, we, you know, we're a youth sports, um, programming, we have five locations around the Charlotte area, this is our second building, indoor swimming building, and we, we have kind of three different things we do, we have a competitive swim team for children, and they're ages from seven to eighteen, we do have kids that go on and swim in college and come back and train with us in the summers when they're home, we have swim lessons for younger children, ages three to seven, and we also have master swimming for, for adults, if you're interested in getting up in the morning and swimming laps, which, believe it or not, there are some out there. So we're real excited to be here. We, we spent the last two years planning and building the building down, it's, we're right down the street on Chestnut Parkway, just opened on December 4th or 5th, a couple months late, but that's okay, and, you know, we're just excited to be here. I had picked this area, I know the basketball had been done well here, know the area pretty well, we seem to have a lot of good chatter, so we're excited about starting our venture here in Indian Trail, and hopefully, you know, bringing some people in to do what we do, and I do want to take a second to, we worked a lot with Todd and Brandy, and, and they were great through the whole process and helping us get done and open and hopefully meeting all the codes, and, and we're just excited to be here.
So I remember when you first came up and presented your idea.
Yes.
And now it's come to fruition and it's open.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, it was good, we're excited, I think it's, it's interesting to be open now, and the phone calls and the emails and the, there's a lot of chatter about having that here, on, you know, our sport is a little challenging, because to be honest, it's, there's not enough swimming pools for the things we do, and so, it's, I've been excited about the excitement in the area, in the surrounding area, so I think it's going to hopefully work and be a good long-term thing, not only for our organization, but the town, too, so we're excited about being here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
If you'd step forward. On behalf... On behalf of the Town Council, Town of Indian Trail, welcome.
Thank you.
You have your many years of great success.
That's great, thank you so much, we're glad to be here.
Don't get that wet.
We're trying to get her to start swimming with us in the morning.
Okay, that brings us to Carolina Nailbar. Mr. Nguyen, are you here? Well, Crystal, is he here? Okay, so we'll, we'll put that aside for next time. And CCS Express Care, Amanda P., are you here? Well, sometimes business happens, so that we can, we'll put them, you'll contact them for next time, that's quite all right. Okay, that'll bring us to the public comments portion. I'll open public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, you may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time, comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor, if you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concerns. We respect your right to be heard, and we, we ask you to respect our town employees' rights to a fair hearing on your grievance. Our first speaker, when you step to, once you state your name, your three minutes will begin, please step to the podium. Richard, Richard, I, is that? Okay, thank you, Rust.
Council members, you won't be voting on the McLendon Place proposal, but I wonder, I wonder how you would have voted. There was a comment by an applicant at the planning meeting intimating that his projects and others like it are going to be inevitable in this area. That rankled me. My question, how is that so? How is it inevitable? We are the people of this town, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, we are your constituents, and you were elected to carry out the will of the people, not as our lapdogs, and I, and I repeat that, not as our lapdogs, but as fellow citizens that we felt shared the same vision for our town and that we entrusted our votes to, to secure and safeguard your quality of life, our quality of life. You are the last line to fence against our complacency. These projects fly largely under radar and are passed or denied without ninety-eight percent of the people even knowing they are being considered, not because you hide it or do not post it, but because it's not until too late we are aware it's happening or the impact it has on our daily lives. We assume that because we wouldn't want it, you wouldn't do it. That's where we fail, that's complacency, me included. I only found out three days before the planning meeting because a gentleman who was, thank God, more vigilant than me, went around putting flyers on mailboxes. That's my fault, won't happen again. But please take note of what happened when we were aware. One person at the community meeting grew to hundreds of paper petitions, four hundred and fifty online petitions, and filled this room just about to capacities with citizens at the planning meeting. As one voice, we declared that the quality of life does not live on an Excel spreadsheet. High-density growth is not growth, it's overgrowth. Building out density in this town demands more infrastructure, more infrastructure invites more overgrowth, which demands even more infrastructure, that invites more overgrowth, et cetera, et cetera. Then another city's problem becomes a yoke around the necks of your constituents, so let's learn from that mistake and not recreate it here. The applicants told us how they lived in the area combined for all these years, and that's well and good, although it pales in comparison to the thousands of years the combined petitioners represent, but even so, in all that time the applicants lived in this area, single-family, low-density suited them just fine. When younger and raising their families quietly on their properties, they weren't clamoring for rezoning to drop four hundred townhome units onto the same place they lived, but now that they're looking to cash out, they wish to do it, to the detriment of the neighbors they claim decades of affiliation with. So three minutes goes by fast, so I'll end with this. Please keep in mind as you deliberate these types of proposals, proposals in the future, that just because we are not here to hear them does not mean we don't fear them. If people knew the wolf was at the door and would see the same local grounds, you would see the same local ground swell at almost every rezoning meeting where commercial and high-density housing was at issue. But people tend to be sheeple, and complacency is a curse, so we trust in you during, during our absence to vote as we would by proxy and place the quality of our lives over the allure of saying you built it bigger than any that came before. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping. But, yes, that was very well said. That brings us to Larry Whitley.
Good evening, my name is Larry Whitley. I'm here to support the plaque that the Howzers would like to put up across the street about Mr. Howes.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Howser, I, I met him when I was sixteen, he was, I was a student at Benton Heights High School, and Mr. Howser was our science teacher, a new science teacher. I didn't realize then that he had come, or what he had done, where he'd been, he flew a B-17 over Germany, Russia, had thirty-five missions, and we, the guys there in the class sometimes realized, well, we realized that he was somewhat jumpy, and after seeing some of these movies of these planes with this being shot at, and I can understand why he was so jumpy, but I didn't realize how important this guy has earned, I respect. He, the planes that he flew back, sometimes for the seat of his pants, they were not even worthy to go back out again, but, but he was issued another plane, but he had thirty-five missions. But anyway, the family, and this is Marilyn and Stephen, would like to place a plaque across the street. This was land that the Howzers owned, and it gives us some history, this used to be a cotton field. There's a lot, something that our, our children can look back and read is what happened here, who lived here, and how important they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, I'll close the public comments and ask for council if they have any feedback to any of the public comments. So we'll close that portion, too, bring us to the law enforcement update, Captain James. The floor's yours, sir.
Good evening, council. I've got before you in the packet, like I've been doing in the past, for the month of January. You'll see between those two, first two pages, one is nine, they're split into nine north and nine south, using seventy-four as a reference point. Two hundred and ten reports total in the Town of Indian Trail for the month of January, that's reportable offenses, so that was actual reports that were taken for a crime or some instance or another where it had been reported. Four hundred and seventy-four business checks between the two zones, and then two thousand one hundred and seventy-four preventative patrols. The very back page, or back pages, you'll see are crashes again in Indian Trail with address points, that's just the crashes that my guys investigate in town, not including highway patrol. That number jumped up again from last month, where we kind of went down after doing that blitz enforcement on seventy-four. That led up a little bit in January because of some training issues and some people, some vacation time and that kind of thing. We've gone back, kind of jumping back up to sixty-two that we took in the month of January, and I'm starting to see the stats work out where it's kind of correlating with our violator contacts, the less our violator contacts are, the higher our crash numbers are, and it's kind of working its way up, vice versa, because we were working them down and they were kind of mediocre between the two, and now as our violator contacts have gone down, those numbers are starting to ease back up. We're trying to currently looking at things, trying to address that with the manpower that we have currently, and we're still working on that. Three hundred and eighty-five total traffic stops during the month of January, and that's down from about six oh four, or six hundred and four violator contacts in the month of December, so that kind of tells you where we're at numbers-wise as far as those contacts go. I will tell you this, that the, we, it's going to be actually be in the newsletter that Abby's putting out in March, but I wanted to tell you that Tyler Leonard, one of my guys, got promoted to the rank of detective, he left last week, we've got two new officers that are in training now on the way up, should have them in place and going full bore in the next two, two months, two and a half months. So changes ingenious, I've got two that'll be finishing up next month with the law enforcement executive program in Raleigh, their graduation will be coming up next, next month, and get them out of that, so that'll put all our supervisors currently up here, lieutenant and below, at some kind of advanced management school or some kind of advanced management training, so I think we're pointed in the right direction, and everybody seems happy. Kevin, questions for me?
Questions, council? The captain?
I just want to make a comment, thank you for the handling of the storm and being out there during that mini monsoon we had there, and...
That was the way that started being a long time.
And just, it wasn't easy, thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda, if there's no changes or removals, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing's been removed for today, that brings us to old business, the fire fee resolution, that is being, Mr. McIntyre, you have the floor.
Um, Ms. Quinn, do we have the actual document that was sent from Mr. Neeland?
It's in Mr. Alvarez's...
Yeah, Mr. Alvarez, you need to read that in...
...that they have was to, to keep it to the independent resolution.
Yeah. You'll read it, sir?
All sixteen pages?
Well, you need to read it into the record, right?
Okay. Okay, yeah, well, I will re, I'll read it, it's only, it's only a page.
No, wait, wait, hold on, attorney gives advice, will you listen?
Do we need to read it?
If, a simple explanation would be fine, we don't need to read the entire.
Okay, this is, um... Is the chief still here?
No.
Oh, he snuck out pretty quick, didn't he? This is the regional?
This is the independent.
This is the individual, but we're going to work to the, we're going to work on the regional.
You might be able to explain it a little bit better than I will.
All right, sorry. Do I ask for a motion or you ask for the motion?
I asked for a motion.
All right, good. This is, essentially, this is the resolution, R-200211-02, Town of Indian Trail Resolution, consenting to the inclusion in the Hemby Bridge District and working towards a consolidation of the districts of Bakers, Fayetteville Providence, Unionville, and so forth. I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but that is essentially what we're agreeing to here, sir, so... Read one little portion. This two? All right, so now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Indian Trail supports Union County's desire to abolish the fire fee-supported fire districts, no longer levy rural fire protection districts special taxes, and establish the fire service districts. So I'm going to make a, that's the motion that I'm making, sir.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre's made that motion, if there's no...
Yeah, so I want to move to adopt resolution R-200211-02.
That completes the resolution, Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, if there's no discussion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
For your signature, sir.
That brings us to remote participation policy, which was asked to be brought up again, everybody should have a copy of it. Ms. Walter?
Right, back in, I believe it's twenty sixteen, the town passed a remote participation policy that permits council and the mayor to participate via electronic communication in up to, I believe, two meetings a year. There are some rules around that, but this would be a standard remote participation policy in the event that somebody has a business trip or somebody has a family emergency that you can call in. that you can call in to a council meeting and participate. You would be able to vote. The only thing you would not be able to participate in is a quasi judicial proceeding and a closed session. Again, common practice among most municipalities just because of the way the world works today and people being in and out and you all's busy schedules. So I, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer. But other than that, this would, it's already been adopted. If there's no changes, then this is just for council's review.
The only addition I'd like to make was the one that I had asked to be requested back when it was adopted that the mayor can call in and participate and answer questions and ask questions, but cannot preside over the meeting from remotely. That has to be done by the mayor pro tem. It's just, it's, to me, it just didn't seem ethical in that case. Any questions?
Just one. In the event of a conditional rezone, can that, can they vote on this remotely?
Yes, they would, a quasi judicial proceeding, which we don't have any, many of those anymore, is more of a trial-type situation, but in a, in a conditional zoning, that is a legislative back-and-forth public comment or public comment and public hearing. So yes, you would be able to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no changes, we can just remake the motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the amended remote participation policy.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to adopt the amended remote policy. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sardish roundabout update, Mr. Hunsager? I'll yield the floor to you, sir. Hope you're having a good day.
You have good news, right?
Is it finished?
It was not, unfortunately. Again, for service council mayors, for people that haven't been up to date, this is basically letting you know what's happened in the past and what have we going to move forward. Basically, in July, we did bid out this project in July 2019 to try to basically maximize as much time as possible to do the work we can, we can do while we can keep the traffic open before we have to shut down the intersection. Unfortunately, we only got one bid at that time, so we basically didn't accept the bid. But we're talking with the contractors that were out there, one didn't actually bid but showed up. Talking about pricing and everything else, we felt that we didn't have enough money in the budget for what the cost overruns were going to be, because as you know, all projects across the board, from what I've been told by other consultants, is going up thirty to forty percent. So we felt, we knew that CRTPO was doing a call for projects in the fall that we could go out after about fifty-five million dollars sitting out there amongst all the municipalities that could go after. So we did that. We have, as you know, Mayor or Marcus will be voting for that next week. We do have several, several projects in there, one being this one and one being Overmire Road with the additional five million. So once that gets voted, we are basically, we're the highest project as far as existing projects getting funded, so I'm pretty confident that's going to go through. We will have to come back to you for that because it will be additional funds. But right now, what I'm trying to do with the NCDOT is basically get them to allow me to advertise a project and not delay it just so I can get those additional funds. So we're trying to work through that. I'm hoping to advertise here shortly so we can start working in March and then start closing the road down this summer. I've talked to the board, the school board, their, where their facilities director, David, you've seen him before, he's came over here. And I'm reaching out to Arboglan to let them know, Captain James, Arboglan, when we shut that intersection down, it's going to be a cut-through. So I have told them in the past that the sheriff's department will be out there to monitor that as best we can for the summer. But yeah, I mean, that's the game plan. I just wanted to give it, kind of give you an update. The initial funding is, right now, is at one-nine as far as CRTPO funds for us. And we have been reimbursed to this point about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. And so we've got one-point-six-ish million sitting there that we can get reimbursed with. But obviously, we're at, we're asking for additional funds. So again, once we get those, we're asking for about one-point-eight. Obviously, that'll be a twenty-eighty split. And I feel we're going to have, need it because I feel these bids will come up higher. And so that additional funds will be warranted. So anyway, you have any questions? That's kind of how we're moving forward.
Do you need any action from us tonight?
No.
Okay, this was informational. Is there any questions for Todd?
Now, DOT makes me, what we're trying to do is a supplemental agreement to the actual agreement we have right now for the additional funds. If they don't approve that process, then I may be coming next meeting to say, well, you're going to have to make a decision as far as approving these additional funds. Hopefully, it can wait because those funds won't even be active late summer anyway. So I can't even ask for reimbursement, even if I've got a say-so, I have the funds in place as far as a verbal agreement. So again, you will be, come back for action, I want that.
Thank you, Todd.
All right, thank you.
Brings us to new business, signage request, Howzer family for Chestnut Square Park. Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, mayor and council. As always, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening. So this is a, the town was approached a while back, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, by the Howzer family to place signage at Chestnut Square Park, the former location of the Howzer home. We come before you this evening to have a conversation about this specific request and seeking direction for potential signage policy for future requests, not only on park property, but potential town property as well. The Howzer family is here. In your packet, there are diagrams of what the signage will look like, and then again, a potential location out at Chestnut Square Park. I'll be here to answer any questions, but I do want to turn it over to the Howzer family for, for a further discussion.
Thank you. Greetings, mayor and councilman. It's a pleasure to be here and it's with great gratitude that I see what is happening at Indian Trail. It is becoming a center for people who like Charlotte and they like Monroe, but they really want to have a little bit of quiet and peace. Since most of you have not lived here nearly as long as I did, then I wanted to give you a little bit of the history about living at this place, which I grew up across the street, and that was where my brother and I were with our parents at that time. We had many wonderful occasions to be out in nature, and our entire family understood the value of nature. It seems that whether you are a family of long ago or you are a family that is just moving here now, you're wanting the very best for your family. And this park has made a big difference for Indian Trail because you have put the park near town center. A long time ago, town center was right up there near the railroad track and the Lily auction. But now, town center has grown and it has now included this park for everyone's benefit. Our parents owned this property for over sixty years, and Stephen, my brother, will share some interesting information.
Yes, hello, I'm Steve Howzer, Jr., and we're here requesting permission from you to erect at our expense a sign like the one shown here to place in Chestnut Square Park. The purpose of the sign is to raise awareness that this town didn't become the fine place it was, it is, by accident. Greatness doesn't occur by complacency. Visionaries and doers made Indian Trail the great place that it is over the many years. This sign recognizes two of those visionaries who are relentless in their work and service to the community, Stacy and Steve Howzer. That's a picture of Steve in the nineteen-forties. He was a teacher and a coach of the boys' basketball team at Indian Trail High School, and he contributed to the overall functioning of the school. He experienced World War II breaking out while he was here in Indian Trail, and he left and joined the Army Air Corps. He was given orders to go to Europe where he served as lead pilot of formations of B-17 bombers and flew over Germany. For that heroism, which you heard some of mentioned earlier, the U.S. Army awarded him with medals, including the two distinguished flying cross medals, the air medal. And after thirty-five combat missions, he came back to Indian Trail with his wife Stacy, who's an Indian Trail native, to continue the work they started here. They saw Indian Trail as a wonder place, wonderful place to live, work, and play. And it was also a good place to raise their family. And so they purchased land, the fifty-one acres that we're on right now, from Mr. William Belk, the department store magnate who owned this land. This property we're now on also includes Chestnut Square Park. Steve worked as a teacher while he was here after the war, a guidance counselor, and put in thirty years helping students with their goals and ended that time at Sun Valley High. In addition, he was also, during this time, he was the commander of the U.S. Air Force Reserve Squadron in Charlotte, helping create the junior ROTC curriculum for all the U.S. high schools. He eventually retired with the rank of colonel and continued on with his teaching and education. Now Stacy, that's her in the nineteen-forties. She was born in the little, not the little, the two-story white house down about a hundred yards from here. She was born in that house. That was her parents' home. Her grandfather was James Ira Orr, one of the founders of Indian Trail. She was an award-winning teacher for twenty-eight years, working with so many students to teach them life skills. In a revolutionary act for the town of Indian Trail at that time, and we're talking about now up into the sixties, she became the first female member of the Indian Trail Town Council. Today, the leaders of Indian Trail are standing on the shoulders of past visionaries such as Steve and Stacy as they actively serve and contribute to make this town continue to be the great town that it is. And I can vouch for that because I see it all the time. Council members, as leaders yourselves, you can understand the value of our request, I think. Placing this historical sign in Chestnut Square Park will inform citizens and visitors to the park that the positive accomplishments made by Indian Trail and made it a great place to live, work, and play didn't just happen by chance. It takes vision and action to accomplish this greatness. And this vision and action is similar to that exhibited by Stacy and Steve Howzer. And there are many people today, including you, that recognize that you've got to be a doer. You've got to be out there and make that change happen, and that's why we have the town that we have today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I got a question. I'm a former session member at Indian Trail Presbyterian Church. So I just wonder if the Howzers helped put the rock around the church or dug out underneath it and put the basement in. You know, it's a sense of pride over there. So I just wonder if, I'm sure y'all were part of that.
My, my ancestors were, yes, sure enough.
That's part of the church history there, yeah.
Around here, all those quartz rocks.
I take a question, that's interesting, just curious. Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'd like Hayden to come back to the podium. Thank you for that history and legacy lesson. Hayden, questions, where in the park? How big? And what you're looking for from the council?
Sure, so in your packet, there's a, there are two pictures. The, the location that was discussed and walked with the family is near the playground. So if, again, if you turn to that packet, there, there are two pictures. One is looking down the trailhead, and then one is looking, essentially, the trailhead is at your back, looking at the playground. So tho, those two pictures kind of give you a little perspective of where the signage is. And there are two signs in there as well. Forgive me, I'm not sure the, the dimensions of those. Three feet by two feet, is that a, is a safe guesstimation, I'm assuming, based on, based on what you had sent me?
And the materials used.
So the materials used are, you know, of high quality. You know, you, we are looking essentially for counsel, for direction. You know, we, this is obviously a one-off request. All the signage, the parks and the town property tend to match, and that is our eventual goal as well, is that all signage is going to match. We envision that potentially there are other requests from other founding families or someone, you know, celebrates something there or the Belk family themselves wanted to place a sign. So we're, we're looking for essentially direction or the ability for our department to propose a policy for, for those signs so that things match and they're not ad hoc.
So can I ask a question, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
So in, for us, so first of all, to the Howzer family, I hope I said that name right. It's good that you can bring that history, right? I've been in the town since 2007, so it's good to know what, what was there before I moved there. I asked questions about where I live and what existed there before I, a house was built there. Hayden, do you, and I'm going to, I'm asking council, do you think that we should probably put together a policy so therefore we can be uniform? I like seeing things like that being kind of put around. I'm, I'm not against that being put around the various locations in town where certain either businesses or people, you know, who contributed to the town lived. But I think that to get a policy in place, to get it in a, to get it uniform, that, that type of thing, so therefore we know that we're not, it's not ad hoc and we're going as we, as kind of as they're coming. But we're getting that policy. But I am not against, once we get that policy in place, I'm not against, you know, getting that, that particular family's kind of history or story out there, if, if I can ask that question. Sorry.
Okay, okay. One quick, one quick comment before, before you go. That's a great idea, but I just want to make a comment. History tends to be forgotten, and people move to towns and cities, and they don't know the real history. And Indian Trail has a rich history, rich families that have helped lay the cornerstone to where we are today. And a life well-lived is a legacy remembered, and we need to nurture that legacy to be remembered. Could be trips for schoolchildren to come see these plaques. Your contribution to the town, I know very well. And the stories, and people will stop and read these. And I think Mr. McIntyre's request is highly appropriate and for things to match and move forward with it and allow the Howzer family to be the very first to lay their, lay their history. Let council everybody, Mr. Head?
I definitely agree. I just think, as Mr. McIntyre said, let's, while we're here, let's go ahead and put a standard together so that, that it's for future. I think this is an excellent idea, and let's just put a policy behind it of, you know, what we want to see.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah, I guess my first question was going to be, what is the policy? But there's not one, from what I understand.
Correct, so we, we essentially are coming to council to seek your approval for, for us to go and create that policy. If, if council was not in favor of the sign or potential future signage, no need for a policy. From what I'm gathering, it's a lot of head shaking, yes, thumbs up. So upon your direction, we can turn around, come back in, you know, two weeks or a month's time, create that policy or at least put it in front of you for, for that conversation.
So one of the questions I had, and you mentioned there, we have existing signs in the park. Are, is there a, are they of the same uniformity?
So there are essentially two different types of signage. There, there is a, if you visit the sign, or visit the parks, you'll see blue signage. That typically goes to all of our rules. These are of a cheaper material, a street sign material, if you will, for the intentional purpose of phone numbers change, logos change, colors fade, you know, trying to be fiscally responsible. It's a lot easier to replace a sixty-dollar sign than it is a six-hundred-dollar sign. And then the second signage is, is more of a formal sign, signage, almost as you would see on the building downstairs or the Veterans Memorial or where the, when the park is dedicated. These are, you know, typically brass, raised letter, gold brushed, something that, that will withstand the test of time, that, that fits and is a little more formalized than, than the rule signs.
So I'm familiar with the one out on seventy-four, and it's about two foot by three foot. I guess it's a state sign that they've put there.
Oh, the historical signs, yes. I believe those were done by the state. It tells a history of, you know...
Sure, yeah, I believe it's, that's like where you would see like Tree City, 2009, something of that nature, is that what you refer to?
He's talking about those signs, they have the little circle on top, and they say... Talking about those signs, they have the little circle on top, and they say historical markers, thank you.
And the reason I mention that is, some of the things, I'm not opposed to this particular signage, you know, especially with the history of the family and other factors. But when we do, it sounds like we do need to create a policy, there's some things that I had just jotted down, is, you know, who will maintain the signs? Who will pay for these signs? What is the cost to install and maintain? What is the criteria now about erecting signs on public property? What will the criteria be going forward? What if you need to relocate the signs due to changes? Just some factors there. And then, of course, I had who pays again. I guess I really want to know who paid. But I think if we created a policy of some sort, as we-
And put all that in.
So we just need to really instruct Mr. Kramer to go ahead and draft a policy, and we'll review it. And then if we amend it, we amend it, and then we adopt it, and then away we go.
And at that time, so we keep the Hauser family in the loop at that time is when you would approve their sign?
Well, I don't know. Would we be the ones approving the signs? Or it would have to be based on the policy, right?
Yeah, let's get the policy, and I, you know, the goal would be that you all approve a, I would say, something like a historical marker plan, and then we have a lower level or a staff-level approval process that they meet the criteria, you know, founding family or whatever, we would want to put on the list for that, for that policy.
I don't think we would want every-
Okay, right.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, so you're prepared for that, Hal?
Absolutely.
Okay, Hayden? All right.
Thank you.
So council, is there an agreement to instruct?
Yeah, we don't need to-
We don't need, just a consensus, you have a consensus. Did you have a question, Mr. Hauser?
I just want to comment that we've been serious about this for a long time, and so in our travels across the country, I know I've taken photographs of many sign structures that are of high quality in parks, national parks, in big cities, trying to hone in to our, what would be suitable, because we were offering to pay for this. And so I'm glad to share that, that's all I want to say, is to let you see-
Keep in contact with Hayden, is what we can say. So moving forward, it looks like this is very positive for the town, and we're glad you brought this to our attention.
I hope you like what's there now. The committee enjoys it, right, the park?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, for that to be a place that people come and experience the natural world is like the ultimate, it really is.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the audit contract for year end 6/2020. Mr. Wodowicz, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, good evening, everyone. We're here to ask for your approval for our fifth year on our audit contract with J.B. Watson and Company. It's hard to believe, it's my fifth year here too, about my fifth audit. So we're asking for your approval.
I have a question, when I can. When fifth is final year, right?
It'll be the fifth year, Marcus, yes.
Final year, correct? And therefore we would change, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
That was my only question.
Yeah. So at this time, we'll need, if there's no further-
I'm sorry, Mike, I beat you to it, I'm sorry.
I know, Mike, you always ask that question.
At this time, if there's no further questions, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the audit contract for fiscal year end 6/2020.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
That brings us to the added item that, Adam, that's you and me. If anybody's been driving up and down Monroe Road and Rogers Road, I don't get to the other side quite as often anymore, the super streets kind of cut me off, and I'm not going to rave the turnarounds. Especially from Brandon Oaks towards Sun Valley, the litter is ridiculous, and it's embarrassing. And from what Adam had explained, correct me at any point, NCODOT was supposed to, but they don't have the funding for it. It's not good for our town, it's not good for the environment, and what we're bringing forth to the council tonight is to allow Adam to bid out, or get a, or get a contract for litter pickup?
So in the past, we've done this two, well, one year. We did it twice in FY '18, and then FY '19 is when, remember, we went back and forth with DOT to get them to pay us, for us to do it, because we were going to do it more often than they were. That ended up falling through because they lost the ability to fund any of those type operations. When that happened, it hasn't been done at all that I know of in all of FY '19, or so far in FY '20. So we're looking at about 16 to 18 months that it hasn't been picked up. So, yeah, just direction for us to go out and ask the same company that did it the last time, because really, there's very few that actually will put their people in the liability out there to actually do it. So just, do you want us to go out and, you know, get a number? Again, I know roughly what it's going to be, but just looking in that direction.
We can make a motion, it's as simple as that.
No, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, yeah, please.
Sorry. Do we have that money set aside in the budget to do this?
So from my standpoint, from a public works account, we could work within that, and then I know I could work with Jim to find the figure that we're working for.
All right.
Any other question?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
What streets are we talking about?
So in the past, when we did it in FY '18, we did Chestnut Lane. Do you want me to list them all? Or do you want me to list the total mileage, or do you want me to list actual roads?
How many roads, how many roads you talking?
11.
Okay, yeah, let's list them.
Okay, so that's what we did in '18, and I think we need to add a few more. But we're looking at Chestnut Lane, Idlewild Road, Indian Trail Fairview Road, Indian Trail Road, Rogers Road, Sardis Church Road, Seacrest Shortcut, Unionville Indian Trail, Waxaw Indian Trail, Wesley Chapel, and Wesley Chapel Stouts. Those are all DOT-maintained roads. I think we need to add to that list one more that's DOT, which is Old Monroe itself. We, the last time we did it, we didn't clean Old Monroe Road. And then we need to add a few town roads or other DOT roads that are smaller roads. Total, it's about 35 miles that I think will be, need to do this time.
And would-
The other roads would be, the new roads would be Younts Road, Faith Church, Gribble, Potter, Bonterra Village Way, which that's the new road, like the service road that was built around, near the bypass, and already said Old Monroe.
Is there a cost?
I have an estimated cost based off of what it was the last time. I'm thinking we're going to come in somewhere around $7,000. Because in FY '18, we were at about $3,500. If I do the math for the numbers that we got when we were going to ask DOT to do it, we were at about $5,500. And now I'm adding a percentage on top of that again, so that's where I'm coming up with that, somewhere under $7,000.
So what we're asking for is council to approve him to go out and get the cost and bring it back to council. Consensus for that?
Yes, consensus.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Just head checks. Thank you.
Okay. Shirley made the motion?
I just need head checks.
It's a consensus, go ahead and get it.
But I'm shaking my head.
Thank you. All right, at this time, that brings us to council comments.
Mr. Morse?
Thank you, Mr. Rust, for speaking up tonight about the, what Indian Trail's about, what you'd like to see it become, and what it is. We've been speaking with one another amongst each other about UDO and the comprehensive plan, and so it was kind of a timely discussion, because that's something that this council is looking forward to doing over the next, in the next year or so, no definite timeframe. But it'll be imperative that folks like yourself, or participants in that discussion, where we want to take our town, how do we want to see it built out, what parks do we want to have, what natural areas do we want to maintain, how many hotel, excuse me, how many apartments and townhomes do we want to see? So again, I thank you very much for coming, and during that three minutes, putting in a whole lot of information. Thank you very much. And to the Hauser family, I remember those cotton fields I used to, when I attended Indian Trail Elementary, kind of ages me now, and then walking home down the railroad line, the railroad tracks, all the cotton fields all the way to Stallings. Unfortunately, I learned one year, I didn't like picking cotton, because that was one of my summer jobs. But thank you all so much, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Really do appreciate it, and hopefully have some dry air over the next few weeks. Good night.
Mayor Alvarez?
Yeah, I would ditto Mr. Morse's comments from Mr. Rust. Very well said, very well put together. Now, just to get people involved, that's the difficult part. Thanks, council, for a great meeting. Staff, you're, can't say it enough, you're incredible. Thank you for making us look good. And the Hauser family, thank you for playing the foundation of this wonderful town. That being said, everybody, have a great evening and God bless.
Mr. Barber?
I'd like to congratulate Hollywood Joe for being citizen of the quarter there. Hauser family, thank you for helping make Indian Trail a great place that it is. I'd like to thank the town staff for its professionalism and dedication this past month. Great job. I'd like to thank, and Mr. McIntyre was recognized by the Union County Indian Trail Weekly as a community leader, well-deserved, and just want to congratulate our mayor pro temp for that great honor and the work he does for the community.
And that wonderful picture.
Anyway, everybody have a happy Valentine's week, and thank you for coming. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
I don't know that I can add a whole lot. Captain, thank you for all you and your deputies do, staff, everybody has said it, and it's really, I really appreciate all that you've done in the past few weeks. We thank everybody else for coming. I, the Hausers, thank you very much. Mr. Rust, I'm just going through the same thing, so ditto, ditto, ditto. Everybody drive home safe. Thank you.
Ms. Howe?
Can I ditto, ditto?
Whatever. I'm not allowed to argue with you.
That's right. Remember that. Just thanking everybody that came out tonight. Mercedes, it was good to see you. We haven't seen you for a while.
Oh.
She used to be on the council. And anyway, it's been a busy day, and are we going in to close session?
We already did.
Okay. We've been back there so much, I'm not sure what room we're supposed to be in. But thank everybody for coming, and drive carefully. And it was a good meeting.
Yes.
We got good people in the council, and I'm very proud to be associated with all of them. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
All right, so I'm going to begin with a statement, so just bear with me. After an extensive and thorough third-party investigation, the Indian Trail Town Council and former town manager Patrick Saidet are part in ways effective yesterday, Monday, February 10th. The Town Council would like to thank staff and residents for their patience and professionalism while the investigation took place. We are unable to discuss the results of the investigation, nor can we provide you with any details related to the employment decision. We expect to appoint an interim town manager shortly. We will be working with the League of Municipalities to search for a permanent town manager. The Town Council and our staff will continue to serve the residents, and we look forward to moving Indian Trail in a positive direction. I want to take a few moments just to recognize the work that our staff does. When we sit up here and we say to staff, "We thank you for what you do, we really appreciate you," we do really mean it. The work, you guys are our first line of contact with the public. Anytime somebody has a question, whether it's good or bad, or complaint, good or bad, or praise, you are the people that they turn to. And we, our town, I think we're about 44,000 people right now, so to keep this place running, you guys do a phenomenal job, and we do appreciate that. Council, I do enjoy working with you. We do not agree on everything, but I can say that we sit up here and we treat it with respect, and we conduct ourselves with order and decorum when we're up here, so that is remarkable. Captain James, want to say to you again and your team, thank you for all that you guys do. Ms. Quinn, as our town clerk, thank you for always keeping us abreast of just what we need to do. Appreciate that. Joe, I looked at, I looked on Facebook yesterday or the day before, and I think your mom sent me a little note, either your mom or your sister, I can't remember who, but sent me a note telling me that what we provided must have been really good, because the recipient was very happy. So when you came up here and you challenged us, we answered the challenge, and now look at you, citizen of the quarter, congratulations on that. Hauser family, it's good to know that we don't lose the history of what's around us, where we stand, especially for people like me who are, I don't want to say new, but not original members or residents of Indian Trail, so thank you for that information. And to everybody else who came out tonight, thank you very much for coming, we do appreciate you. We do listen to the information that we receive, whether it's through email, phone calls, and so forth. We pay attention to it, and all we want to do is to be good stewards of the town that we all love and we live in. Thank you, drive home safe.
That being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor?
Dennis?
That would be unanimous, and Karen, 8 o'clock on the news. I win.